No, it's on.
It's on?
Okay.
Was the lens covered?
Yeah.
Was that the lens cover?
Yeah.
All right, I see it. Thank you. There it is. Okay. That's why. Okay.
Just watch my wire by the computer.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
Uh, almost. Let me, uh, just give me a second.
Yes, just let me know.
Hey, John, it's Rich Calore. Can you hear me?
Hey, Rich.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do me a favor?
Yeah.
Sure. You, everybody that's on Zoom, because everybody's like, background noises is, you can hear them. Can you mute everybody?
Uh, I don't know.
Can everybody on Zoom mute themselves?
On Zoom, not here, Zoom.
Can you mute yourselves?
Yeah. Or else. Sorry.
Can you see?
There's a lot of people that aren't muted.
They have to just mute their phone, John.
Can you do it, John?
John, you haven't muted everybody?
No, no, they have to mute their phone. You just have to ask them to mute their phone because they're getting background noises from the individuals that are on Zoom.
Looks like everyone's muted now. Can you hear us?
I, yeah, I still see games and those that's not muted.
Everybody who's participating can mute yourselves unless you are called, please.
A real reason is because of this.
When you put that on which you put them?
Or how you hold the screen, example, yeah.
Looks like everyone is muted.
Sorry, me, neighbors.
Neighbor?
Neighbor.
No.
You're waiting for John?
Is everyone here now? Well, they're muted.
Can we hear you?
Okay.
Yeah, they'll be here, just not speak.
I can't speak, but I can't say anything here.
They'll have to unmute themselves.
Okay. Good. All right, Avonola Quipfellings Engineering, representing Brent Kudus and Orange County Bagel. So thank you, we did get the determination with all the variances. The survey came in, and there's two problems. The survey was a little different than our map, but on our map, this back lot line is 109 feet, 109.25. We actually drew it at 115 feet, even though it was labeled 109. What that did, it made the lot seem bigger by six feet than it was. So that affected the lot area variance, that affected the side yard variance, and it also affects the coverage of the lot. So we were under 25% with our larger lot, which was a fake number. Now that we have the actual number, we're under the 25%. I mean, sorry, over the 25%.
You're over, right, right, I got, I got.
So we marked up the determination that we would ask for this additional coverage variance and change the other two side yard and lot area variances to reflect the actual survey and correct map. That's basically it. But, uh, take any questions?
So I think the issue for the board will ultimately be, we provide the village with notice on this project for certain requirements that are now being changed.
Okay.
So specifically, they're going up in size relative to what the variances would be.
Yes.
So I wouldn't believe that the board are basically in a position where they can just unilaterally change the application without the proper notice being afforded to the residents to see whether in fact, you know, what input they would provide. So it'd be my position openly that those three variances that now have to be changed will ultimately have to be a new application of the board without determination. No, because it's...
Just come back to us.
Right. So the area variance for square footage?
For the lots, yeah, to be reduced.
Right.
And then both side yards.
So the, you know, the outcome might ultimately be no different, but from the standpoint of procedure only. We don't want to certainly set precedent by this board that allows applicants just to change numbers after the determination. We ratify it, so I think we clean this route, it'll be able to come back, and those three variances will be the next date as quick as you can obviously get it noticed, and back in here will be the date.
Appreciate the expedited process. We're on the planning board agenda for next week, so I think we'll have to postpone that until we make sure we're able to take...
You're going before the planning board with these changes?
We would, but I think until we have the determination, they wouldn't be able to rule, so I don't know that we would go there. Maybe just to get comments, but we'll probably wait until we...
Yeah, we apologize, but this is the best, the only way we're...
Okay. Yeah, I understand.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, because we have to hear people.
Oh, all right. Does anybody have any questions?
They're not, they're not even here.
They're not, I know they're not here for that, but I do have to ask, just to...
I don't know, who are the board members on that show?
Steven.
Steven and, uh...
Steve is on. Steve Presser. Merrill is here.
Oh, did you play that microphone because I'm muted?
John, do you have another date?
Another one?
Another day?
Steve, if you want to...
Oh, yeah, yeah, for planning board, right?
No, zoning.
Zoning board, okay.
It would be from them.
Are the other zoning members unmuted? Steve, do you have any comments?
Steven Merrill, do you have any comments?
So we're gonna put a motion before the board on the issues of the three variances with the board's determination if they should require the applicant to go back and file a new application relative to the appropriate requirements for, based on their new survey, and go through the process again relative to theirs. So put a vote to the board on that?
Yes, I agree.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're missing one. Merrill, can you hear us? You have the unmuted?
Yeah, he's muted.
Sign language, no sign language.
What you're doing on Zoom?
Unmuted.
No, I can't do that.
No?
You say the guy should just raise his hand.
Okay. Merrill, can you hear us?
Yeah, right.
I was having issues with you.
Okay. Okay.
So there's a, there's a, there's a vote before... There's a vote before the board to require the applicant to make application for the new three variances that are required, and there's three positives in favor of that, and we're waiting your vote. Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Third one, state of the mind. What's that show? What's that show? Merrill, can you hear us? Is that M G? M, M.A.S., isn't it? Or M D?
M D.
This is M D.
March seventeen?
Oh, there you are. You can hear us? Can you hear them now? Can you hear us now?
I can hear you again.
Okay.
All right, so quickly, there's a, there's a vote before the board to require the applicant to resubmit a new application based on the new reading from the survey. There's three votes in favor of that, we're waiting your vote.
Aye.
All right. A vote of four to nothing. The applicant will do that, we have a date for the seventeen that's available?
We're probably at eighteen seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seventeen coming up.
So we'll put that, we'll put that on for seven o'clock PM, provided we can meet the requirements for a notice of seven. Okay?
Seventeen, seventeen, so far.
Yes. So I have eight sets of the drawing, the proposed variances. Do you want me to read those to you now, or just put it together with the application?
You can leave it to me, if you want.
Who do we have?
One Nicole Street.
Nicole Street, okay.
Thank you very much.
One Nicole Street here?
Yes.
We're reopening between tables.
Can I just sit here?
Four months ago? Sure. Are you doing this evening?
Sure, you can sit, sure.
Can the board members hear the applicant on the computer? Can you hear us, Steve?
How are you?
More reading?
Yes. Pennsylvania, Mass.
Can't recognize you.
How long, I, I...
How's it going?
A long time. You wanna just refresh the board on...
Sure, well, um, we were at the planning board for a special exception to authorize a two-family house, an existing two-family for quite some time. But we require some variances. And under your code, it's kind of a little unusual. Both in one respect, you have to refer to, this is in the R-100 zoning district, but in one respect, you have to refer to the RA zoning district, that just says that it requires frontage requirement of 225 feet when you're in the RA zone. There's no frontage requirement in the R-100 where we're located. And this property has 160 feet of frontage. And then in addition, we are seeking the side yard variances and the rear yard. And in that respect, the building inspector had determined that the RA requirements should apply, and that's part of the interpretation for the board. Because we're saying that we're in the R-100 zoning district, so only the R-100 requirements can apply here. And, but for instance, if you go to your zoning code at 315-15, which is the R-100 requirements, it says that within the R-100 district, no building or structure shall be erected unless it complies with the following requirements, the R-100 requirements. So if you have a building or a property in the R-100 zone, it's the R-100 requirements that apply to it, not the, not the requirements in a different zoning district. But regardless of that, you know, we still need area variances, even applying the R-100 requirements, and these are area variances. They are supposed to be granted by the ZBA unless granting the variances would, there's facts or evidence that shows that granting the variance would cause a detriment to the health and safety and welfare of the neighborhood and the community. And you weigh that detriment, if there is any, and we don't believe there is, against the benefit to the applicant. And in this case, the benefit to the applicant is significant. One of the, one of the documents we submitted yesterday was a letter from a local Realtor who says that if this, if this residence were rented as a single-family residence, the rent per month would be between $2,600 and $2,800 a month. And we also submitted on a list of rental values of about, oh, 20 or so apartments, warehouses, rental properties, which support the Realtor's opinion of 2,600 to 2,800. In contrast to that, the applicant is receiving a rent as a two-family of $4,250, so $1,600, $1,650 more per month than he would receive if it rented as a single-family residence, which is a significant benefit, that's, that's almost $20,000 a year difference in income. So the benefit to the applicant is significant. I'm not aware of any, of any reason that continuing this use as a two-family would be a detriment to the health and safety of the neighborhood or the community, and since that's the standard that the board has to apply, we're requesting the board to grant the area variance. We also submitted just recently, and I can run through this quickly. There were some questions before about whether there was a self-created difficulty in seeking these variances. And so we submitted tax bills, the town tax bills, which, you know, the property is taxed by the town, from 2017 to 2021, and then also the recent village tax bill. And all of them, right on the bill, it says two-family res, you know, two-family residents. And the applicant, Mr. Wersberger, he was aware of these tax bills when he purchased the property. So he purchased and relies on this as a two-family residence. And in the letter I submitted yesterday, I also run through how he made an attempt to get building department records and wasn't able to because the building department wouldn't provide the municipal searches. You know, his title company made a request for the building department records, the municipal search was common when you buy property. And the building department has a requirement apparently that you can't, they won't deliver the municipal records unless the smoke detector affidavit is filled out. And the form that the building department used, or at least at that time, was that the transferor of the property, the seller of the property, has to fill that out. Well, in this case, with the bank, that was the owner of the property, and the bank didn't occupy the property and didn't have knowledge of whether there were smoke detectors or not, and the bank's not gonna, the banks don't do that sort of thing anyway. So he couldn't get that affidavit and therefore couldn't get the records, even though they requested them. And then there was also some comment at the, at the public hearing. Mr. Terry seemed to think that he had shown the file to Mr. Wersberger before he purchased, but then Mr. Terry and the village's attorney went back, and they realized that Mr. Wersberger had actually purchased the property before that was to the, to the building department, when he was shown those records. So he had no idea that there was this affidavit in the file, you know, about a two-family use. And that's in a memorandum that was submitted to the ZBA by the village attorney and by Mr. Terry. So there's, there's no self-created difficulty, that's one of the factors, although the law says that's not a determinative factor in any event. So that summarizes what we submitted just the other day. And if there's any other questions from the board, would you like to answer those?
Did your client have a, have a Realtor in the purchase of this home?
No.
You dug directly with the bank?
I went to the, in place of foreclosure option.
You know that you could have taken pictures when you went into the house of the...
There's no access.
Pardon?
There's no access usually, usually there's no access to foreclosure houses.
Yeah, you can't get into the house before they're sold.
Are you coming to consider the window, or no?
I have, I have dozens of homes in the, in the Blooming Grove area that are of significant less square footage in the $3,000 range per month.
In the village of Washingtonville?
In Blooming Grove.
This printout is all rented camps.
Right.
Within the village, in the entire village, in the last 365 days.
Yeah, so you're, you're charged, you're splitting the house in two and renting, what, 800 square feet, 900 square feet for $2,000 a month?
Both together, I rented for $42 per year.
And how large are each?
One is a three-bedroom, and the other one...
How many square feet, how many square feet?
I didn't measure it, I don't know, I'm not sure. I know the house, it says on public records, it's approximately $2,800, the entire house, so I'm not sure.
It's 27 and change, but, um, that's what I'm saying, I...
I'm just saying, the highest count in the, in the entire village of Washingtonville, the entire village, the highest count in the last year of $2,800, rented, not active, rented.
Right.
Because we call me on rented, we don't look at active, active, because it doesn't, doesn't say anything.
What is the listed as now, as a two-family? Is that in the... Morning?
It's, well, I mean, we have documentation that the previous owner was told that it was not a two-family, that they could not, they could not rent it, they could not list it, they could not sell it as a two-family. We have documentation that we got a couple months ago.
And Mr. Wersberger was not aware of that, but what he was aware of was the official tax bills, which listed as a two-family residence.
Okay, what are the variances that have been...
I'm confused because you're, you're, in, in my way of looking at this whole picture, you're pulling pieces from R-100 and RA to blend them together to make it fit the purpose that you're looking for.
It is a bit confusing, but we're not the ones blending it. It's your village code that blends that.
But your application has to be for one or the other. You, you, I, I don't believe that you can, I don't believe that you requested for one of the other.
We requested both.
You're kind of...
I think the, the first interpretation that the board has to determine is what setbacks you're using. That's the interpretation that the applicants asked. Once, once they come to a determination of the board's position on that issue, then ultimately we can talk about the dimensions, et cetera, as a release of this project.
Right.
Do you have the, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
If you have the application handy? If you look at the bottom of page two, it, it sets forth what the, what the actual lot size and setbacks are, and then also sets forth what the requirements are in both the RA and the R-100. And we listed the RA on here only because the building inspector determined that the RA requirements apply. We don't believe they do.
Where's the house located? Is it in the R-100?
It's in the R-100, yes.
Okay, so then, shouldn't that apply? Shouldn't we go and buy it?
That's, that's what we believe.
So just for purposes of clarity for the record, this, this application had been out of legal January, correct? For its first time on, I think that's right?
Yes.
So we had received, the board had received the application, the board had additionally received the documents being referred to by council from the building inspector, as well as council for the village. We also received a set of documents from the village police department that we introduced as in the record. And so we're gonna also mark and incorporate council's letters and documents that he provided to support this application. That is an email dated March 2nd, 2021, so we'll mark that for today's purposes as exhibit one, March 3rd, 2021, and we'll put that in the records for the purposes of clarity. You can proceed with your question.
She comes all over the mess, from which district, what is it all under specifically, R-100?
Is there any approachment from R-100 to RA or vice versa?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
You know, I mean, the way, the way the properties are, the way the surveys are, you know, a lot of times, there's, you're in one zone.
Oh, no, no, that's, this R-100 is not even close to the RA. In fact, in, in this situation, this particular property is, it joins, let's see, it joins the Mobile Home Courts District, also the Office Residence District, and it's very close to the Office Building Research Institute or Laboratory District. So it's, it's really close to these commercial districts. It also adjoins the Orochemicals Factory and right across the street from the Firehouse. So, you know, the, the location of it, both in terms of the neighbors and in terms of the zoning districts, you know, show that there'd be no detriment to allow the continuation of the two-family use.
The last time that we met, you, there was some discussion that you wanted to create a third family, a third residence.
Oh, that, I don't remember this discussion.
You did.
I think the board made that comment, that the board had heard somewhere that he wanted to do that, but that's just not...
I don't know if that was his attorney or whatever, but I know that that was part of the discussion.
Just to clarify, there was one meeting regarding this application that me and Ben didn't attend. So might be you guys were discussing this back then?
No, you were here, no, you were here with the other, your other attorney.
Making a third apartment? There's no...
There was discussion about that.
Well, there's no third apartment, and there's absolutely no intent... Well, there's no third apartment, and there's absolutely no intention to do so.
And it's already being used as a two-family.
Correct.
Right.
Way before his purchase.
Well, you put the, you put a wall up, making it a two-family.
No.
You did not?
No.
Because we have a letter stating that, that you did construct a wall.
A letter from me?
No, a letter.
Someone?
From the attorney or the person living there or somebody, I'm not sure.
Attorney living there?
It was a while ago.
From the person living there.
Yeah.
They were concerned.
Right.
Constructed a wall to make this third apartment?
Make a third space.
No, that's just, that's just.
I think you're referring to a, you're referring to a document received by the village of Washington on June 30th, 2020, where a tenant called ultimately informing that a wall was put up.
Right.
Separating another section of the building, her name is Erica, et cetera, and she talked about a meter basically not being allocated. That's contained within the records submitted with this application, about five pages.
As a matter of fact, Erica Cabaljulka was, I took her in as a tenant, as a second tenant. So she, after she came in, I mean, I didn't, how can I make walls after she came in, she was the second tenant.
And each tenant is paying how much per month?
Each tenant is paying, one pays, the total is $42,500, and the, and the max as a single would be $2,800.
How much do each tenant, how much do each tenant pay?
Each tenant?
Each tenant.
One $26,000 and the other one $1,650.
Are there any questions from the board members on Zoom?
Some people will kick you upstairs, apparently it was only a 35-minute meeting.
Over there. Okay, we're back, sorry we lost you.
How many meters are on the house?
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Just one.
One meter?
We're back, thank you.
So are there any questions from the board members? Steve, any questions on this application? Or Merrill?
Well, it's been said the last five minutes because we inherited.
How long?
At least, you know, at least five minutes.
All right, so the, the questions were posed from the board to the applicant about creating a third, third apartment, a separate wall, where the applicant had intentions of creating a third apartment, he indicated no, said there's a single meter on the property, he indicated it, basically, he didn't make any statements about that before the board.